With my colleagues Michael Kramer, Isaac Ambiti, and Ted Miguel. And we are very grateful this was partially funded by the GLM LIC. This is going to be results from a randomized controlled trial that we conducted in Kenya, looking at the impacts of a combination vocational training and cash grant program on youth labor market outcomes. So I imagine I don't have to do too much motivation with this group. So I'm going to mostly focus on the Kenya case. So of course, we know youth unemployment is a major economic and social problem. This is particularly true in Africa. So this 2009 World Bank report noted that youth account for 60% of the unemployed. Kenya in particular has a high unemployment rate, even by African standards, young adults. And so that's the group we're going to be focusing on. So, and by this, I mean in the age group 15 to 29. So these are individuals who are, you know, in that very exciting time when they're deciding how much further to go in school, entering the labor market, things like that. So, young adults entering the labor force account for 30% of the population in Kenya. And roughly 20% of them are unemployed. And a further 25% are neither in school nor working. So we're going to focus on two potential policy responses to this issue. So the first one is going to be skills training. And in particular, in our case, it's going to be vocational education. So of course, this is a very attractive policy in principle, especially in a place like Kenya where, especially when we began our study, there were very high rates of dropout before secondary school completion. And then among those who did complete secondary school, very low rates of progression into higher education. However, you know, evidence is really mixed on whether vocational education is sufficient to boost youth unemployment, or sorry, boost youth employment, entrepreneurship, and earnings. So there've been lots of papers already presented here this morning, I think, looking at some of this. I'm just going to cite quickly a review article, so this Blatman and Ralston 2015 article, which looked at, I think, over 20 studies and concluded generally modest effects of vocational training, and that paired with relatively high program costs. The second potential policy response that we're going to be focusing on is cash or capital grants. So this is something that, of course, is a growing and important policy interest right now, so providing cash to youth. So we're going to be focusing on unconditional cash transfers. And this is, those in particular are fairly simple to administer, especially if you don't have any kind of like lengthy detailed business-type application or anything like that. And especially with the advent of mobile money, you can administer them very cheaply from some kind of central place. And the upside of these types of transfers, of course, is that the individuals that have the flexibility and the freedom to invest however they see fit, which may yield higher returns. But again, I think so far, the evidence, there's sort of mixed impacts on this. So Blatman, Fialan, Martinez have a study in Uganda where they find increased earnings in labor supply due to cash transfers. So I apologize to Andrew because he's speaking next, but the Brudewald Newman et al. study. So they have, they're also working in Kenya, but in a completely different setting than we're working in. And they find short-term gains, but start fading out. And then there are the Demel et al. study in Sri Lanka, and the Fauchamp study in Ghana, where they're finding higher returns to capital, but particularly in male-run businesses. So let me get to what we're doing. So we're going to be conducting a randomized controlled trial that's going to estimate the impact of vocational training, cash, and the two together on youth labor market outcomes during the 2009 to 2016 period. So to give you a sense for how this randomization worked, so we had nearly 2,200 people apply to this program, and we randomized them into four treatment arms. So there was a voucher-only treatment arm of about 600 people, a grant-only treatment arm of about 500 people, another treatment arm that they received both the voucher and the grant, although I'll get to timing in a few minutes, of about 460 folks. And then, of course, the comparison arm, which received neither a voucher nor a grant of about 600 people. So again, I think, so there's sort of growing interest in this combined effects. So when we first started this, there wasn't much work on it, especially in Africa. The two closely related studies to ours are the Blatman, Fialan, Martinez study that I mentioned in Uganda. So they're really looking at grants for training and/or business investments. And they find, as I said, increased earnings in labor supply, particularly for women. However, theirs is really a combined intervention, so they can't really distinguish between the impacts. And the next is Andrew and co-authors' study in Kenya, where they're doing something closer to what we're doing, where they have different arms, looking at, trying to look at the impacts a little bit more separately, and urban Nairobi, but I'll let Andrew talk about his study next. So our contribution to this space, so one, we're really going to have a lengthy follow-up over multiple rounds. So as far as the, so we kind of did a phase-in of the two programs. So the voucher intervention happened first, the cash transfer intervention was a few years later. So we're going to have a follow-up that's up to seven years after the training intervention, and up to three years after the cash intervention. We're going to, we have two to three rounds of data collection post-treatment, depending on which treatment arm we're looking at. So we're going to try and derive some of those statistical power benefits from multiple, excuse me, from multiple rounds and using recall data. I should also say, because this study was part of a much larger sample involved in a different study, we're actually in the field collecting more data on them right now. So we'll have even longer-term results in about a year or so. So as I said, because we're, this is part of a larger study, so we were, this project built on an existing panel with information for individuals as early as 1998. So this is going to allow us to have a really detailed heterogeneity analysis. And also, we tried to really focus in designing these interventions on things that could be naturally scalable. So in particular, so for the training voucher intervention, we're looking at providing vouchers for people to choose which institution they want to go to, excuse me, for existing public and private institutions in Kenya. For the cash intervention, so it's an unconditional cash transfer, and we're using mobile money to distribute it. So something that, again, it could be, hopefully, easily scaled up. So to get a little bit more detailed into our exact study, so we recruited youth from Western Kenya. This was part of an ongoing panel survey called the Kenya Life Panel Survey. Basically, in 2008, invitations were sent out to individuals in the Kenya Life Panel Survey saying, "We're starting this vocational training program. If you're interested in potentially receiving vocational training, you should come to meetings to hear more about this program." And so we're working, so our sample is individuals who came to those meetings and then ultimately submitted a completed application. It was a very short form, just indicating they were interested in participating in this program, and had some support from a community later vocational training administrator or something like that. So we conducted a baseline survey in 2008, so the individuals in our sample. So you can see it's a little bit more heavily weighted toward females. That's because this broader Kenya Life Panel Survey that it was drawn from is also about 60, about two-thirds female. So 63% female. Most of them at baseline were in their late teens to early twenties, so on average, 21.7 years old. Most of them, so 90%, were living in Busia County, which is a western, primarily rural county in Kenya. And about 6% were living in a large city, most of those were in Nairobi. Individuals had, prior to applying for this program, had received, on average, 8.8 years of academic schooling. So that's, they finished primary school and maybe started some secondary school. But they had been out of school for, on average, four years. So they weren't continuing with the traditional academic track. Only 14 of, only 14% of them were employed at baseline, and 22% had previously attended some type of vocational training. So the first intervention was the voucher intervention. So what we did, so among these almost 2,200 eligible applicants, basically, half were awarded a voucher, and half were not awarded a voucher. So among those who were awarded a voucher, I'm not going to get into too many details on this, we had a, we had two different types of vouchers. So half were awarded a voucher that was unrestricted. They could choose basically any institution they wanted to, as long as it was, you know, so the private ones had to be kind of lightly vetted, just to make sure it wasn't actual vocational training kind of program. But otherwise, they could go wherever they wanted. The other half were awarded a restricted voucher where they could only attend, they could only use those vouchers at a public training institution. The voucher value was about $460. So this was enough to cover, at that time, nearly all fees for up to two years of training. So it would cover like tuition and things like that, but not incidentals. And we distributed these in early 2009. So most people enrolled in a training program in early 2009 and then had completed it or stopped attending by 2011. So take-up in this program was high. 74% of individuals who received a voucher did ultimately enroll for at least one term in a program. It was high in both of those voucher treatment groups. Applicants did show a moderate preference for the public training centers, so about 56% overall. And we had very little non-compliance in the group that didn't win a voucher, so only 4% of them ultimately enrolled in training. So we have no statistically significant differences in take-up across gender, age group, baseline education. We did note, so among those who chose ultimately not to go, or who went briefly and dropped out, a lot of the reasons, so the most popular reasons reported that for things like out-of-pocket costs, so the transport costs to get there. And then particularly for women, things like pregnancy and childcare were barriers to enrolling or continuing in their program. So to give you a sense for what types of programs people enrolled in, so you can see, so nearly a third enrolled in something related to textiles, so most of this was tailoring. Another third was composed of motor vehicle mechanics, and then those kind of construction trades, welding, masonry, things like that. And then some other, so computers, and then smaller numbers of hairdressing, beauty, driving, business skills, those types of things. So ultimately, we do find a very strong relationship between individuals who received a voucher and then the years of vocational education that they received. So we have our first follow-up for that group. So again, they enrolled into, they first enrolled in 2009. We started a follow-up survey in 2011. It took a long time because it was part of a larger, again, this larger Kenya Life Panel Survey data collection. But we surveyed everyone between 2011 and 2014 for the first time. And we found, so at this time, the control group had completed, on average, about a third of a year of vocational education, whereas people who had been awarded these vouchers had completed nearly a year, so two-thirds of a year more than the control group. And this was similar between those two different types of vouchers. We had another follow-up in 2016, and at this time, we found that 50% of people who had been awarded a voucher had completed a course compared to only 24% in the control group. Okay, so that's our first intervention. The second intervention was this unconditional cash grant. So what we did, so of this, again, nearly 2,200 individuals, approximately half were randomly assigned to receive a large cash grant, so worth about $250. This was stratified by voucher recipient status, as I showed you earlier. And these grants were distributed starting in 2013. So this was meant to be like a couple of years after they finished the vocational training course. So we had one follow-up that was just looking at the impacts of vocational training, and then we administered the cash grants. Among those who were physically located, who had been selected to receive this grant, uptake of the grant, I think fairly unsurprisingly, was 99%. Because we came to these people and said, "You've won a surprise, like you've won a grant." So this was an unconditional grant, but we did do what I would call a light encouragement. So when we came to introduce the grant to the recipients, we handed out pamphlets that had tips with starting and running a small business. We kind of had some statements like, you know, "You can use this money for anything you want. You might want to consider using it to launch a small business or invest in an existing business," something like that. So something to kind of encourage it to be used for entrepreneurship, in terms of what it was actually used for. So again, as we all know, like, we went back and asked people what they used it for. Reporting on your spending is always a little fuzzy, right? So I'm giving you, this is kind of the fraction of what, how people said they spent the grant as a fraction of total spending. So as you can see, if you look at sort of the blue and the green together, so nearly half used it either to open a business or to expand their own existing business. And then about a quarter used it to buy livestock. And the rest, it was used for things like getting additional training, household expenses, household improvements, or land improvements, things like that. And then I just wanted to show you quickly, so among those who did invest it in a business, what types of businesses these were. So about a third were using it for a business that was a skilled trade. And another third were using it for what I'll call hawking. So this was primarily selling used clothing, which in our study area of Busia County is a common business. And then smaller amounts for things like retail shop or some other type of commercial business, things like that. So just quickly, we did register a pre-analysis plan before the completion of each wave of data collection that we've done. And what I'm really going to focus on today is the primary outcomes that we prespecified basically every round, which is total hours worked, total earnings, self-employment profits, because of course, we were kind of encouraging this to be a self-employment venture. And then, because in none of these consumption rounds did we, were we able to conduct a full-scale, well-designed expenditure survey, what we, so we don't have that great measure of welfare yet. What we're going to look at is sort of a proxy, just looking at meals eaten. So in terms of data, we have three follow-up survey rounds so far. And I'll show you, what I'm going to show you is the results by round, and then also pooling across all rounds. We also ran these, you know, using ANCOVA, using fixed effects, everything's pretty much the same. So I'm just going to keep it simple and show you the pooled cross-section results. So we thought a nice way to show this would just be graphically, so you could more visually, kind of easily see how things are changing over time. So this is, our outcome is looking at total hours worked, and this is for the vocational training voucher intervention. So if you move along the x-axis, this is, so the first round, that light gray one, is the baseline, like pre-treatment round. And then that strong black line shows you when the treatment happened. And then, so we have three follow-up data collection rounds after that. And then on this side over here, I'm going to show you the pooled results. Okay, so all the graphs I'm going to show you are going to follow the same format. So our y-axis is giving you kind of the percent change as a result of the treatment. So you can see that, oh, I should say also, so the circles are the coefficient estimates, and then, of course, we're showing you the 95% confidence interval. So you can see that in terms of total hours worked, before the vocational training voucher intervention, it looks, so there's some suggestive evidence that people who won the vouchers were even a little bit, they were working fewer hours, right? Post-intervention, so that first data collection round we had between 2011 and 2014, there's no, so they were working more hours, right, compared to what they were before, but there's no statistically significant positive impact on their hours as compared to control group. And again, that kind of carries through each of those three follow-ups. So we basically found zero effects on total hours worked at the first follow-up, and then not much happening after that either. And our pooled results, that pools all three of those rounds of data collection together, still gives us no statistically significant effect on total hours. So that was the voucher treatment intervention. Now I'm going to show you the grant intervention. So this time, we have two baseline rounds, right, pre-treatment rounds, because that 2011, 2014 was just the voucher follow-up. So looking at this, you can see that, again, it looks like individuals who, there's some suggestive evidence that individuals who ultimately received the grant treatment actually worked slightly fewer hours prior to the treatment. Post-treatments, they work substantially more hours, right? So 10% more hours at that first follow-up. So that first follow-up was one year after cash grant distribution. We followed them up again in 2016, and that was about three years after cash grant distribution. And at that point, this finding has dissipated to zero, okay? So yeah, just to kind of go quickly through this, so again, this is just in table form, but I also wanted to show you this because it shows our interaction effect also. So we only show that in the pooled sample, because we're deriving, you know, so that's the smallest group, so we're limited on power there. In order to derive our most, you know, statistically precise estimate that we could, we wanted to pool everything together. But, so you can see in that first round of the cash transfer is really that strong positive effect. It dissipates quickly. No effect across the board in the training voucher, so, sorry, this is all post-treatment. And then no statistically significant effect in the interaction between the grant and the voucher winners. So I'm not going to show you these results broken down by sector in terms of tables, just to give you a quick overview. So we found increased time in self-employment. This was really driven by females. We found less time in wage work, that was for both genders. And actually, so it looked like the women were shifting out of wage work into self-employment, and the men were shifting out of wage work and into, so there was this modest increase in agricultural work. So these shifts are strong in the short run, in particular, so that first year post-grant. But the wage work and ag hours actually persist, even in the second round. And again, no training effects, no effect on that interaction term. So to kind of quickly go through these results, so this is, now we're looking at total earnings. So again, you can really see, across all voucher follow-up rounds, we don't find any statistically significant impact of receiving a vocational training voucher. And in terms of the grant, there's some suggestive evidence of kind of a bump up, right, but it's not statistically significant, even in the first round, and seems to drop a little bit by the second. So that was total earnings, right? Now looking at self-employment profits, so unsurprisingly, no statistically significant gains in self-employment profits from the voucher. But then you move on to the cash grants, and you see, so the difference at baseline was zero, right? But one-year post-treatments, we see a very large, like doubling of self-employment profits. By the second data collection, two years later, this has decreased quite a bit, but is still statistically significant, right? So that people are still reaping the benefits in terms of self-employment profits. So again, by sector, so I'm going to focus on the cash grants, just due to time, since that was where we saw the more interesting results. So we see these large, short-term gains to self-employment profits, somewhat dissipating over time. Reduced wage earnings in the short run, this is driven by males. And I think the interesting thing here is we did see, so again, I told you males were kind of shifting into more hours worked in ag. We see some suggestive evidence of increasing agricultural earnings over time, so even going up in the second round. And this is, they're more likely to sell output, they're more likely to hire workers, they're more likely to use these improved practices like fertilizer and seeds. And then, just to give you, so again, this proxy for welfare, so we're actually in the field right now, collecting a very detailed household consumption expenditure survey. So in about a year, I can show you those results, and we'll see what we have with a much better measure. But for now, these impacts on meals eaten, so unsurprisingly, given that we didn't see much on the voucher treatment before, we still see effectively zeros on meals eaten. However, we do see, as a result of the cash grant intervention, sort of a large increase in the first round, somewhat dissipating, but still just barely statistically significant by three years after the grant was distributed. So to quickly wrap up, because I think I'm running low on time. So in terms of vocational training, no discernible impacts on labor market outcomes or living standards, even after seven years. So at first, when we did our first follow-up, we thought, maybe they're just catching up, you know, they've been out of the labor force, and other people, the control group has been accumulated experience, we thought maybe they'd catch up. Doesn't look like that now that we have this additional rounds of data collection. So the open question is, why not? So, you know, some things we've been thinking about are whether they, you know, they've sort of been accumulating the wrong skills or outdated skills. But I guess another issue here is really external validity beyond Kenya and beyond our sample, because there is this new paper by Alfonzie et al. looking in Uganda, they, their study's quite different than ours, and they're also focusing on an urban sample, but they found positive results of training there. So cash, so these effects have far, are far more positive, especially within one year. They dissipate quickly, except for possibly in agriculture. So I think this is where we line up a little bit better with what Andrew's going to be presenting next. So why do we see these dissipating effects? Well, right now, our thinking is that, so many of the youth have become, so they invest, the businesses they invested in were kind of petty training, they didn't invest in growth opportunities necessarily, or maybe more risky ventures that just didn't work out. And then that training and cash sort of combined, so I'm going to caveat this because of statistical power. So we were powered to kind of identify modest effects. We didn't see those modest effects. Yeah. So I'll leave, I'll leave the rest to discussion since I'm out of time.
Any questions? If you have any questions.
Yes. I just got a question on the vocational training. Do you think take-up, the 74% of the vouchers, then they turn into the 50% of the take-up? Do you have any ideas who took up, who took up the training? Was it going to fall to 50% of the vouchers?
Oh, I'm trying to remember what the 50% is here. Sorry. So 74% used a voucher?
[inaudible]
Sorry, I'm not sure. So half, so there were two different types of vouchers, but it was, it was basically take-up was equal across the two groups. And in, ultimately, 74% of people were, took up the voucher that was awarded to them.
For me, that seems pretty high. Like, in previous trainings that I've, we've done in Ethiopia, we struggled to get 50%.
Oh, really?
And so I was, I was sort of wondering, was there any indication of who took up the training? Because actually, the women who take up training in Ethiopia seem to be the lower, from the lower end of the distribution. And we were kind of thinking, maybe it's, that's because they have more time on their hands, and the opportunity cost is, actually, they need the training the most, so they go for it. But it's harder for them to actually do something with the training because they're from the lower, lower edge.
Yeah, I see. Yeah. So, well, I mean, so what I presented, so we have no differential take-up among people who applied, right? But obviously, there were certain types of people who applied. So yeah, I don't, yeah, sorry, I did that analysis like five years ago, and I don't have it in front of me right now. But yeah, that's something we could put in here, is sort of who was more, of the KLPS sample, who we have all this detailed baseline data for, who was more likely to apply to the program?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, maybe you have a, just sorry to follow up. You said they more likely to take up the public institutional training? That's a surprise to me, because usually, you'd think private was more of better quality. But do you have any idea of why that was?
Yeah, so sorry, they were...
You said moderate preference for public training centers?
Yes, that wasn't, they were more likely to take up. That was just, so at baseline, we asked people, if you get a voucher, so before you even know if you've been awarded one, we asked people, if you get a voucher, which institution would you prefer to go to? And we had them kind of rank institutions, and we let them choose. So the first ranking was just among any institution they know of in the country. So they included public and private in some cases. And then, depending on what they answered in that one, we might ask them a second question that's just a rank above, among public, just to get a sense, yeah. But that was a pre-award.
Of public institutions, do people like them in Kenya? Because, I mean, again, in Ethiopia, it seems like, for us, the quality of the training was jeopardized somewhat by, we went through the T-VET colleges, which are under the public. So we were kind of, our argument was, the quality of these trainings are worse than the private side.
Yeah. I mean, at least, my sense was, when we started this program, they were well-regarded, people were interested in going. And I think, as evidenced by, they were more likely to state they would, that was their first choice, was to go to a public institution. I don't know whether it was just because they were more aware of them than private. Yeah, I can't really say.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. In Kenya, the public institutions are more trusted in terms of vocational training because of the quality, and there's some level of standards that are observed in the public institutions, that is for vocational training. But my question would be, which kind of skills were these that were imparted in these vocational training institutions? Because maybe it had a bearing on, on the kind of, yeah, so textile, textile, so it had to do with the tailoring?
Yes, so this was, this is lumping, tailoring, dressmaking, together, yeah.
Okay, because there could be a combination of factors here. The type of training they chose... Because maybe it had a bearing on, on the kind of, yeah, so textile, textile, so it had to do with tailoring?
Yes, so this was, this is lumping tailoring, dressmaking, together, yeah.
Okay, because there could be a combination of factors here. The type of training they chose, and then you know the business environment in Kenya. If you're aware, the lifespan of SME, which this, the participants would most likely engage in, is very short. They normally last not less than five years. So maybe there are other factors that played, play a part into the quick dissipation of the kind of enterprises that they would engage in. So maybe you'd want to look into the issues surrounding the quick, the death rate of the businesses they'd engage in, yeah.
Sorry, can you repeat that last part? Look a little bit more into what they're, so after they finish their training, what they're ultimately going to do?
After they finish their training, they get into business, what are the, what are the issues that make the business fade out quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was, yeah, so we need to delve a little bit more deeply into this now. So this was in part what spurred the cash transfer, like second intervention, because we had focus groups after vocational training intervention was done, and we asked people, like, I mean, we were talking to them about what they were doing now that they were done with their, with their voucher program. And it was sort of commonly said, well, I want to start a small business in my field, but I don't have the, like, startup funds to do so, whether that's the money to buy the sewing machine, or rent a shop for motor vehicle mechanic, or something like that, right? Yeah. Yeah, but you're right, we need to, we can delve more deeply into this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have two questions. The first is, the dissipating effects in terms of earnings. Can you say something on whether this is rather due to the abandoning of the newly-created activities, or is it maybe more due to reduced earnings over time?
Well, so I guess I'd say it's a little bit of both. Like, we're still trying to tease this out, to the extent that we can. But my sense is, yeah, so part of it, so I think, actually, we haven't exploited this yet, I was just thinking about this this morning, or I think we did exploit it at some point, and I didn't, I didn't get it in the, I don't remember the results, and I didn't get it in the presentation, but we're looking at things like risk preferences before the intervention, and if you were more likely to have, to invest in something a little bit more risky, and things like that. And I think that might, if we, if we look at that a little bit more, like, maybe we might get a little more information on why, sort of, the earnings, they were high at first, and then they kind of decreased over time.
And the second one, if I got it right, you mentioned in the beginning that this is a nicely scalable intervention, so do you have any take on general equilibrium effects that may take place, or just...
Unfortunately, no. Yeah, because our, because it's a small area, right, with our, with our studies. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's always been a question for us, is, when you come out of this, especially as you can see, particularly from this vocational training voucher intervention, so many people enrolled in just like three fields. So what would happen if you brought this up to a much larger scale, is a great question that we can't say much about in our study, yeah.
Thanks for a great presentation. I have two questions. Do you guys have skills outcomes? And also, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the interaction effect. So you said it's underpowered, like, is it a positive point estimate?
Yeah.
Is it that the trained people are the ones who are investing in skilled businesses? And what is it? Is it like petty trading is just as profitable as a skilled business? Is that a punchline that you could draw?
Yeah, so, I mean, this is, I think this is why I keep bringing up kind of the risky businesses. So my sense of these, so a lot of these businesses were this hawking, like clothes, used clothes, like a really popular, because it's like a low entry cost. And I think maybe people, yeah, I don't have a great sense for this yet. We need to do a little more thinking on this, and talking to people, but making the decision to enter that industry, and thinking it might, like, you might do really well and explode, but a lot of people are thinking the same thing, right? So that might be part of the problem. Yeah, so unfortunately, I don't have, so all of our interaction effects are positive, but small. So yeah, I need to, I think what I need to do, when we finish writing this up, is present like exactly what we're powered for, and what level we were finding, so you can get a better sense for sort of what the gap is. And did I, sorry, did I answer your first question?
Do you guys have skills outcomes?
We, so, we did ask some, like, business knowledge questions in one of the follow-ups. We didn't find much on them. As, I mean, we were primarily interested in that, especially as a result of the cash intervention, and we didn't find much there, yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Oh, sorry, can I still ask you one quick question? It's just a clarification question. I guess I just missed your explanation about the sample. Did you say 10% of participants lived in big cities, or?
Yeah.
So they were included in your study, and did you see any different impact on those people, and, no? That's weird, isn't it?
But it was really a small group, right?
Oh, really? But even if it's small, I mean, you don't see, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody who speaks Spanish, ideally?
Yeah, go on. I'll start.
Thank you. So this is joint work with Madalena Onorati, Pamela Jaquila, and Owen Ozier, and really follows quite closely on what we were just talking about. Does this thing work? Did you, were you able to use this? Yeah, no, it's fine. So the motivation is really the same. Youth in Sub-Saharan Africa, there's, face a large challenge of un- and underemployment. And in Kenya, where this research takes place, over 60% of the population is under age 25. While growing, the formal sector really remains small. And the World Bank estimates that by 2020, only one in four of these youths entering the labor market would be able to find a job in the formal sector. If you look at kind of the breakdown of where they're expected to find jobs, it's really split between agriculture, and then these household enterprises. And the challenge of actually entering the labor market, and transitioning in from either school, or secondary school, or tertiary education, can take a really long time. So there are a lot of active labor market programs that are designed to try and ease this transition into the labor market. We've talked a lot about these already today, through, be it either vocational education, job search assistance, you know, trying to increase the skills, or lower, increase the quality of the match between, with firms, or entrepreneurship promotion. We saw that kind of a vast, almost 40% of the expected jobs were expected to be in self-employment or entrepreneurship. So in many developing countries, it's really been promoted as a potential landing spot for some of these new entrants into the labor market. However, some of these interventions, such as like credit market interventions, be it a capital, a grant drop, or just training by itself, really haven't been found to have that, or all those impactful results. So however, programs that combine these labor market training, together with capital grants, or life skills programs, through kind of a bundled intervention, have been found to have far more positive impacts. And this kind of carries through both in individual studies, as well as meta-analysis as well. So with that in mind, we evaluate the Girls Empowered by Micro Franchise Project, which is a program implemented by the IRC in Nairobi. This is an example of a multifaceted intervention. It has characteristics of both formal wage employment, together with kind of some of the advantages of self-employment. So it connects unemployed participants with well-established businesses, to launch small-scale multi-person franchises. And on the self-employment side, participants really have the ability to innovate as they see fit, they can set their own hours, expand if they see an unmet market need, but it doesn't require these participants to develop their own business plan. Further, they're given a capital grant, so it's really, kind of the whole program as a whole, is sort of a business in a box. You are given, it's designed to ease multiple constraints that could be preventing youth from entering the labor market. So if it's a credit market constraint, they're given the capital grant. If it's a human capital constraint, they're given the training that they need to then go and start a business. So we compare the labor market outcomes of these GEM participants, to a control group who applied for, but did not receive the program. We also benchmark this, the program impacts against a cash grant of comparable value. So applicants to this micro-franchise program, all of whom presumably are interested in starting a small business, were randomly assigned to either the franchise program, the cash grant treatment, or a control arm. And we administered repeated follow-up rounds, to examine how these program impacts are evolving over time. So this is a map of the area where the program was implemented. This is three neighborhoods, largely informal settlements in Nairobi, Babadogo, Dandora, and Lunga Lunga. And the intervention, the micro-franchise intervention, targeted young women aged 18 to 19. And the key distinction between this micro-franchise intervention and other ones, is this focus on these specific business models. And the idea that it is, you know, it sets them up with supply chain linkages. It kind of is designed to, to ease multiple constraints. For the implementation, participants were matched with one of several franchise models, and were given kind of this franchise-specific training, as well as this capital supply chain linkages, as well as kind of a more general business or life skills training, as well as ongoing mentoring, kind of after these micro-franchises launched. And here, so there were two business models, one is a small-scale hair salons. Participants in this program went through a six-to-eight week training program, and then launched a business. And the second one was this mobile food truck, food cart firms with, where they partnered with a chicken producer, a well-known chicken producer in the country, to try and start, promote, so these mobile food carts are quite common in Kenya, and this was a new entrant into that market, trying to develop a market there. The women assigned to the grant treatment received, similar to the program we just saw, an unrestricted $230 transfer. And similarly, they were given no real encouragement on how they should be spending this money. That said, all of the applicants who applied to the program originally applied to this micro-franchise program. So we had kind of 900 applicants, they knew that, they did not know at the time that there was going to be this cash transfer program, but they were all interested in going through and starting a small business. In contrast to the really complicated and multifaceted micro-franchise arm, this is a very simple and easy program, that really focuses on relaxing just a single constraint, the credit constraint. And if credits, if credit constraint is really a binding constraint to entering entrepreneurship, then we would expect that kind of relaxing that credit constraint would promote entrepreneurship. However, if the human capital still represents a constraint, and you do need these multifaceted programs, then you would expect that it would kind of have, have much different impact than, than the more complicated program. Unsurprisingly, we had very high uptake for, for the cash transfer, and really, in contrast to the multi, the GEM program, the micro-franchise program, the implementation costs, and kind of the implementation complexity, they're, they're just really not all that comparable. So we had 905 applicants to the franchise program, these were then randomized into either the control group, the franchise treatment, or the cash grant. They were stratified, and the sample was reasonably balanced. We conducted three main rounds of data collection so far, the baseline survey immediately before the invitations, a midline survey, designed to measure impacts after about nine months, and then an endline survey that was roughly 18 months after the intervention. We're excited to, that we'll be doing a longer-term evaluation, and we'll kind of get into the reason why this is particularly interesting in this context, as we get into the results. So for the sample, so 92, it was all young women within these kind of slightly informal settlements within Nairobi. So these are, this is a young urban population, that are on the cusp of kind of entering the labor market. So many of them, 92% had completed second, had completed primary school, excuse me, 41% had completed secondary school, and about a third had done some vocational training. And this is really kind of where you start to see that they're in this, the midst of a demographic transition. About half were still living with a parent at baseline, 16% were cohabitating, but about 41% had given birth. So this is a population influx, at this point. Only 15% at baseline reported that they had an income-generating activity, but almost 55% had done some work for someone in the past, or self-employment. So kind of they're in this process of entering the labor market, figuring out what works, and it's kind of that process that I described before, where they're trying to transition into the labor market. It's fairly standard OLS approach, we're going to focus on the intention-to-treat estimates, because the compliance rates really differ across the treatment arms, and we want to understand the impacts of this scaled-up program. So if you were to roll these out and offer it to a broad population, we care more about kind of how the, the average impacts, knowing that kind of everyone is going to accept the cash grant, but the compliance with this long and complicated program is going to be much lower. So we're going to focus, I'm going to split it up into kind of the midline impacts, and then the endline impacts. And we're going to go through kind of labor supply, labor income, and then something else. So involvement in the labor market, we have, you see that, so to kind of walk you through what we are looking at, this is the probability of self-employment, we've got the control group on the left, franchise in the middle, and then the cash grant on the right. So you see that there's a large, and, large and significant impact, we'll kind of have the point estimates on the next slide. It had a large and significant impact on the probability of self-employment. That maybe isn't surprising, a lot of these people wanted to start their own businesses. But we see a kind of commensurate decrease in the probability of working for somebody else. These are really offset, so you don't see an impact overall in the probability that they're engaged in any income-generating activity. So you have an increase in self-employment, offset by a marginally significant, marginally significant decrease in the probability of paid work for someone else. And one thing to note also, is that they're really, despite these two very different programs, you see very similar impacts across the two different treatment arms. The interventions also help women to change sectors. You see that they, the franchise treatment, potentially unsurprisingly, increases the probability of working in a salon. Some of the women were, you know, went through a training to work in a salon, and then they went and actually worked in a salon. That's encouraging for kind of the program fidelity. But both treatments also increase the participation in the retail sector, shift women out of potentially less desirable work, such as janitorial work or trash collection. And the franchise treatment also led to a decline in the probability of kind of working in entertainment, or kind of agricultural labor. If we then kind of shift to the intensive margin, we see that there are large and significant increases, again, in the hours of work for self-employment, that are to some extent offset for the franchise treatment for, by decreases in paid work for somebody else. But overall, these aggregates, so that we, there's an overall increase for the grant treatment, in terms of hours worked, that it, that is largely driven by this increase in self-employment hours, but that the increase in self-employment hours for the franchise treatment is largely offset by a decrease in the hours of paid work for somebody else. But the area where we're actually seeing these impacts are very different. So on the grant treatment, it's really the increase, so sorry, let me say what you're looking at. These are regressions of the probability of working at least this number of hours. So probability of working 40 hours, the blue line represents the point estimates, together with the confidence intervals. So you see that the grant treatment is really increasing the probability that they're working kind of a normal schedule, working 40 or so hours in a week. If we shift now to income, we see increases across both the franchise and the grant treatment in labor income, largely again driven by increases in self-employment income. Interestingly here, despite kind of the decreases that we saw in the probability of paid work for self-employment. for somebody else, kind of this wage work, we don't see similar decreases in income stemming from that work here. So these aggregates actually have large and significant increases. You can see the control mean is about five and a half dollars. The grant treatment is leading to something close to around a 60% increase in, in income here. Here, again, we see big differences in where in the income distribution the impacts are stemming from. So the franchise treatment is really increasing the probability that you have kind of these minimum number of hours in the labor market. So it's increasing the probability that you're in the labor market, even at a low intensity. Whereas the grant treatment, sorry, that you're in the labor market, but you're earning kind of a low subsistence income. Whereas the grant treatment is really increasing, almost across the distribution, your likelihood of having kind of a low, medium, or high, particularly this high income at the upper end of the distribution. So we could talk about that if we want to. It's just, it's a little hard to walk through, and I'm worried a little bit about time. You can see that, so this is the probability of the impact on self-employment. You can see that if you did not complete secondary school, you're more likely to have a larger impact associated with these interventions. Similarly, if you have a higher grit, you're also expected to kind of have a greater impact on your self-employment. Greater, maybe that was in the back. So one thing to note here is that both the franchise treatment and the grant treatment increase the likelihood of self-employment, and they're both kind of have very similar impacts despite very different interventions themselves. Both treatments increase income substantially, and both help women move out of these less desirable sectors, but the impacts really aren't identical. The grant treatment increases this labor supply and also increases the impact of, or increases the likelihood of these relatively high incomes, whereas the franchise treatment increases that kind of subsistence income. So if we now transition towards these impacts after 18 months, we still see these large and persistent impacts on the probability of self-employment. The decrease in likelihood of working for somebody else is, is somewhat mitigated at this point. So you don't see any significant impacts on the probability of paid work for somebody else. You still now, these are almost 50% increases in the probability of self-employment, so this is a large push into self-employment. And for the franchise treatment, that impact that, the impact that you're engaged in any income-generating activity now persists to kind of 18 months out. However, the impacts on hours worked that we saw at nine months don't persist to this, to this 18-month period. You still see an increase in self-employment hours, but now these are offset by decreases in paid work for somebody else, unpaid work, so that you really, while the point estimates are positive, you don't see real movement in this labor supply. Impacts on income also disappear in the second year. So you still see kind of positive point estimates on self-employment that are almost entirely offset by negative point estimates on the paid work for somebody else. And if you think about that kind of, where we, at the midline, we saw this big increase in the probability of these relatively high incomes. Now you see nothing. Like, there's really no impacts across the income distribution. And might prompt a scoff, but we're going to skip that one again. So if we now kind of look at what happened, if we think, you see these, this is comparing now the midline and the endline across both self-employment and income. We had a persistent impact increasing self-employment, but the impact on income, these positive impacts that we saw at midline, don't persist to the endline. And this is kind of similar to what we, it's a little more extreme version of what we saw in the last presentation. So what are a couple explanations for some of these trends that we're seeing? One is that women are launching unsuccessful businesses which shrink over time. The idea that they may not know whether they are high-ability entrepreneurs, but they're suddenly receiving this large influx of capital, so they try it out, which, and it eventually shrinks over time. Another is that they may know their type. They may know that they're unproductive entrepreneurs, but they basically don't have access to a savings, a safe savings mechanism. So they set up a business and then basically just eat through the business as a savings mechanism over time. It's also possible that self-employment is better in some non-welfare approach. It's potential, potentially possible that it's kind of these flexibility of hours or something along those lines, but we really would kind of expect to see that somewhere in the data. The third is that this self-employment is a mistake, that it makes women better off in the short run, but then it slows their job search, the accumulation of skills and experience, leading to kind of equivalent or potentially negative outcomes longer term. So the idea here in the first one was that you have two different types of people. High-ability individuals could sustain a business over the long run, so that's this green line. If you give them, they're, they're facing a credit constraint, that's kind of this flat line along the beginning. If you give them a credit infusion that gets them past the flat-line portion, you push them up into this kind of green shaded area, at which point they're able to sustain a business longer term. However, if you have low and low productivity types, they don't actually have an ability to sustain a business longer term. However, it's, so we see at midline, it was really stemming from, if, so we have the control group, the franchise, and the cash grant. We saw increases across all of them. But it's not, at the endline, it's that the control group is actually catching up. So it's not clear that self-employment income is not actually declining, it's that the income from the paid work is increasing. So individuals who are starting these businesses that eventually close, or sorry, that don't actually close, they keep persisting, suggesting that they know that they're getting some alternative benefit from, from staying open. If it's the explanation number two, if women prefer self-employment, then we would expect to see some impact somewhere. We don't see longer-term impacts on the probability of these low incomes. We don't see longer-term impacts on expenditures or life conditions, or sorry, living conditions. And both treatments actually reduce leisure time. So it's unclear what this kind of non-pecuniary or non-welfare impact would be that is leading people to want to, or leading these women to prefer self-employment. It's possible that the self, they may prefer it for the longer-term experience, that it, they're gaining skills as a result of this that will be valuable longer term. And that's one of the, kind of working through some of these dynamics to see whether the longer-term impacts that we're seeing really persist. Do you see the cash grant, sorry, the, the women who started these entrepreneurs, these micro enterprises, do you see their outcomes actually increase once you're looking kind of three, four, or five years down because of the skills they were able to develop through this kind of more multifaceted intervention? It's also possible that entrepreneurship is a mistake. There's some evidence that maybe supports this. If we look at some of the skills measures, so treatments seem to slow the accumulation of computer skills. So we look at whether they've done computer trainings, we had a computer typing test built into our survey, and whether they complete a, or sorry, whether they regularly use a computer. Both treatment arms really, sorry, decrease the probability that they're developing these skills. And on the seconds required, that's, it's kind of taking them longer to complete this test. So both interventions shifted women towards self-employment. They had large impacts, large kind of short-term impacts on income, but the labor supply impacts on kind of the extensive and intensive margins don't persist. And what's happening from the control group side, it's not the fact that they're entering these, starting these small businesses and then dying out, it's the fact that the control group is really catching up. These two very different programs have really comparable impacts, but they're not identical. You see some differences across the two in terms of where and how they're shifting income and labor supply. Finally, kind of are credit constraints creating a poverty trap for young women? It seems that, no, for most women, there's no long-term impact on income, but they may be actually holding back entrepreneurship. We see this large shift into entrepreneurship when you ease a capital constraint, or when you kind of either just the capital constraint or this bundled program easing multiple constraints. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the interesting presentation. You seem to conclude that because there are no long-term impacts, then both interventions have the same effect, so if you compare them in terms of welfare. But one intervention is delivering these short-term income effects, so it would have an effect on cumulative welfare. So it's still consistent with the credit constraint story, where if I'm impatient and I really care about these short-term income effects, I'm not able to exploit them because of credit constraints. The other question that I had is, do you have a sense of selection? So for example, if you were to run a regression on the people who are wage-employed, do you get a negative coefficient? So are the people who are wage-employed in the grant treatment sort of negatively selected people? And so, so in a sense, people are sorting themselves over, over their ability to be in the wage employment sector or in the self-employment sector. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second question.
Is there any sense that the people who are starting the businesses, where people would have got lower wages otherwise?
So you're absolutely right. Like, these short-term welfare changes could be really important. The fact that we're measuring income changes kind of nine months after the intervention, but they're still kind of relative to the value of the intervention, they're fairly small. It's kind of an increase of around $3 in, per month. So you would have to make, if we think that you could kind of parameterize the impacts a lot of different ways, but you would need to have really large impacts in the first few months to, for that welfare calculation to end up positive. I think what potentially is more interesting, or more likely on the welfare side, is that the training that they're getting as part of the franchise program could have longer-term impacts that they're able to utilize in starting a different enterprise that's potentially outside of one of the, you know, small number of sectors that they were pushed into as a result of this program. And that's really, I think, why we're trying to get the longer-term impacts through these kind of five-year surveys. Does that answer your first question? Okay. On the selection question, so is there any, can you repeat it one more time? Can we talk? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. The issue of incomes dissipating with time again comes up, but did you consider the fact that, you know, with SMEs, the moment someone sets up a business and it appears successful, there'll be five other similar businesses opened up in the same locality? So this is, these are characteristics of a typically perfect competitive environment. So at first, during entry, there are profits, but the profits are then split with the entry of, of other firms. Was this taken into account in your analysis? And it could probably explain why incomes are large in the first year, but with time they, they grow smaller. Thank you.
So one of the things that we did that I didn't present here was, we actually did a, a survey of existing firms in the neighborhood that this intervention, that the intervention was implemented in, to measure the spillover impacts on the existing businesses. So if, basically, I think the premise of what you're talking about is the idea that these firms were somehow able, in their first months of operation, to find a niche in an already fairly competitive market that they were able to exploit, to generate kind of this short-term increase in incomes. The fact is, in many of these settings, these firms were entering largely competitive markets already. So it's, I think, we can get at that to some extent by looking at whether the introduction of a large number of comparable firms into these markets had a negative impact on the profits of existing firms. And we have the data to do that. And it really, there were not substantial negative spillovers from the program. Kind of the, the general equilibrium side of things is possibly because the firms closed like quite quickly, right? Like, it could be the other side of it, where they're not able to persist within the market, entering a competitive market. There's one behind you. Last one, I guess.
Thank you for your presentation. Andrei Rüger from University of Barcelona. So do you have any, so along these lines, I think the two treatments look very interesting because the salon apparently seems to be something very fixed, locationally speaking. And the food cart is flexible in that sense. So what was, do you have any more further information about maybe where these people usually tend to go to sell, or maybe even geographical patterns that you, you could follow them or so? And inputs that these businesses got?
So many of the supply chains were really constrained to the neighborhoods that the program was implemented in. So one of the, some of the community-based organizations that were implementing this together with IRC, opened up small supply stations that the firms could draw on. So if you wanted to get a new set of chicken sausages, you would have to go to the CBO in order to stock up on them that you would then take out into the market. I think what you're highlighting is really interesting. What we had hoped to do was basically get little GPS trackers and throw them on every chicken truck. But the, it was, I mean, we didn't end up doing that. It was, it was logistically and cost-wise a little too burdensome. But maybe what you're also getting at is the fact that the, the two, while they're both, the two franchise treatments are very different in what they're actually doing. The problem was that many of the students self-selected into the intervention that they were most interested in. So we don't really dive into whether there were heterogeneous impacts across the different franchise arms. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, it seems to be frozen. Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, so hi everyone. This is a joint work with Aishan Ansam by Brak NGO. right jobs, is important for productivity. However, the efficiency of the matching process crucially relies on the amount of information on the skills of workers there is available in the labor market to both workers and firms. In particular, lack of information on the skills of workers at the time of recruitment in firms may affect the efficient allocation of labor across firms, so potentially increasing mismatch and reducing productivity. so potentially increasing mismatch and reducing productivity. So we think these kinds of problems might be even more relevant in developing countries where labor markets tend to be informal, and so where firms may face more limited access to sophisticated screen technologies or job recruitment platforms, where the presence of skill certifications is lower. So what we're going to try and do in this paper is to get at the productivity impacts of introducing a new credible signal on the skills of workers in the labor market. And so to do that, we have designed and implemented a two-sided labor market experiment in Uganda. And the experiment really has two components. So first, we schedule real job interviews between young workers that are entering the labor market and small firms that are looking for workers. And everybody gets that component of the intervention. And then we introduce experimental variation in whether information on the skills of workers is disclosed to both the worker and the firm during the job interview process through the provision of a new skill certificate. And we focus the information revelation on the soft skills of workers. There are skills related to work ethic or interpersonal behavior. An example would be the big five personality traits. And I'll be clear on how we define these skills and why we choose these skills. But the key thing is that these are skills that are reported by managers as being important, but difficult to observe. And so given our design, then the analysis proceeds in three steps. So first, we use reduced form evidence from the experiment to study whether managers respond to the certificates by revising their beliefs on the skills of the workers they meet. And this is important, because it's going to tell us whether managers actually value this information directly. And then we look at whether workers also respond to the certificates by potentially revising what they think they can achieve in the labor market, for example, their earning expectations, now that they have a new credible signal on their skills. And so this is telling us whether the workers then value the information. And then we write down a simple model of information acquisition and recruitment that links the way that we see managers updating and the way that we see workers updating to the new signal, and generates predictions on employment and earnings. And then we're going to compare these predictions, again, to reduced form evidence on these outcomes, both at the initially matched firm, as well as in the two years after the intervention. So we're going to follow the workers. We leave the certificate with the worker regardless of the initial match, and we follow them for two years. So Joel, let me just be clear on why we have the two-sided design and why we have the information on beliefs. We think this is key to interpret any effects on earnings as coming from a productivity effect, the certificates. For example, suppose that the managers don't value the new certificate, but this, so there is no new information for the managers, but somehow, the workers update, they become more self-confident, for example. So they start bargaining harder for wages, they start searching differently. So these effects could show up in earnings. If you just measure the earnings of the worker, you could find that the worker's earning more, but that's just because they're bargaining harder. And so this is a rank-sharing effect. It's nothing to do with productivity. And also, it could be the workers are just searching harder. And so in a standard job search model, they'll have more offers and they'll have higher earnings. But again, that has nothing to do with productivity. So here, because we have the direct, we can observe the direct response of managers and whether they value directly the information, and we can see whether the workers directly value the information, I think we're well-equipped to make productivity statements, which is, in the end, what we really care about. So there is a number of literatures we contribute to in Labor and Development Economics. In the interest of time, let me just point to, I mean, again, in this conference, we don't need to spend too much time here, to the first bullet point. Here, there is a growing literature on labor market frictions and employment outcomes in developing countries. And I think here, the key contribution is that we can really look at the role of new information, new signal, separate that from returns, from human capital accumulation, and we're going to try and make statements about productivity. This is one of the very few studies that uses a two-sided design that we used to get at that. And also, it's a relatively long-term study. We look at, follow workers for two years. Okay, so let me get down to what we actually did. So as I said, we work with both sides of the labor market. So this is the timeline of our activities. We have the activities related to the workers at the top, and then the firms at the bottom. We started by identifying a sample of eligible firms for the intervention, and we did that by running our own census of small and medium enterprises operating in a number of urban areas in Uganda, in sectors such as hairdressers, auto mechanics, and so on. We identify over 1,000 firms, and then to all of these, we offer them to participate in the intervention. So we said, if you're willing to participate, we're going to try and match you to a worker that is just graduating from vocational institutes and is looking for jobs. And over 400 firms that accept to participate form our final research sample for the experiment, our experimental sample. On the worker side, we follow a similar approach. And so we identify as eligible for the intervention all workers. We conduct a census of workers that independently from our intervention had decided to enroll and were already receiving training at vocational training institutes. So these are workers that are learning how to be auto mechanics or hairdressers, the same skills that are used in these firms in the same urban areas. So then we show up at the training center one day, and we say, look, there is this program we want to implement. So if you decide to sign up, we are going to try and match you to a firm for a job interview after the end of the program. But if you accept to participate, we're also going to screen you. We're going to conduct a number of tests on your skills. And some of this information could be revealed to managers during the recruitment process. And so the over 7, almost 800 trainees that decide to participate form our experimental sample. We then went ahead and conducted matching and signaling intervention that I will describe, about two months from the baseline and skills assessments. And then the data that I'm going to use, that we have, comes from three sources. So first, we have a matching survey. So after each job interview, we know. That's where we get the information about how the managers are responding to each certificate they see. And then we follow the firms after six months. And then the workers, so our primary outcomes are going to be on the worker's side. We follow them 12 and 26 months since the matchings. Now, as I said, workers were aware that we could disclose information from the skills assessments to the managers. And so I think, a question we thought about, it's kind of natural to think about, is to what extent that affected the selection of workers into the experiment. And so we can speak to that, because since we thought this could happen, for all the workers, for all the eligible, for all the eligible trainees, we have an initial measure of their big five personality traits, before they know anything at all about why we are there. And so then we can show, you can test for selection into the program by looking at, by plotting, for example, here we plotted distribution of one of the big five, but we do it also for the others. We put them all in a regression, it doesn't matter. Conscientiousness. And you can plot the distribution for those workers that are interested to participate, and that's the blue bars, and those workers that are not interested to participate, and those are the green bars. And you see the distribution is clearly shifted to the right. So this is consistent with workers being, it's telling us two things, right? It's telling us that workers are partially aware of their skills, and so this is consistent with selection on expected gains. Workers with higher soft skills are more likely to select. And it's also telling us that, and this is going to be important for interpreting our results, that the sample is positively selected. So this is not a random sample from the vocational institute. This is a positively selected sample. And the managers were not told about this. So if they're expecting the average worker, if they're expecting us to match them to the average worker in the vocational, or to a random sample of workers in the vocational institutes, then the revelation of information might provide more positive news than otherwise. So just very briefly, we focus on soft skills, as I said, because these are reported by managers in our baseline survey as being important, but difficult to observe. In addition, they're also reported to be relatively scarce compared to, in terms of the beliefs of the managers over the distributions of these skills. Another thing we find out in the baseline survey that is going to be useful for us is that we document substantial heterogeneity among these businesses. And this is not surprising. We know there is tons of productivity dispersion in these small firms. In particular, there is good variation in the cognitive skills of the managers, measured by Raven Matrice's test. There are strong predictor of profits. So higher ability managers have larger profits, and importantly, they value soft skills more, we find in the baseline surveys. So we're going to get back to this kind of heterogeneity when look at how managers respond and value the certificate. And so just very briefly, we're going, of course, into much more detail. In the paper, we focus on, to decide which specific soft skills to focus on. There is a number we could focus on. Again, we use the preferences of the managers in the baseline survey over which specific soft skills they would like to have more information on. And so we isolate trustworthiness, creativity, communication skills, prosociality, and attendance. These are the skills that we measure. I don't have time to go into details of how, but at the vocational institutes. Then we grade the workers on these skills, and then using the typical grading system of the Ugandan system, so from A to E, where C and above would be a pass grade. And then we put these skills on a certificate. And importantly, this is a real certificate, so the information is verifiable. It has the stamp of the largest NGO in the country, which is BRAC Uganda. And importantly, we document that the grades that we give on the certifications are positively correlated to the conscientiousness and the other big five personality traits that we showed before predict selection. So this is confirming that the sample that we matched to managers is not just positively selected on the big five personality traits, but the kind of selection carries through to the skills that we actually reveal on the certifications, for example, trustworthiness. So just to summarize our experimental design, we have the both sides of the labor market. As a first step, we allocate workers and firms to a treatment and control group by random assignment, stratified by sector and region. And then we match the workers and firms for job interview. So we schedule the job interview, and we facilitate that happening. And so importantly, treatment workers only meet treatment firms, and control workers only meet control firms. There is no cross-treatment matches. Comparisons is going to be across treatment. Until the day of the job interview, everything is the same. Everybody's showing up to the interview. Nobody has ever heard about the certificates. On the day of the job interview, in the treatment matches, we reveal the certificate to both the worker and the firm. We show it to both before the interview starts. And of course, we are concerned that just revealing a piece of paper with the stamp of the largest NGO in the country could be interpreted as an endorsement. So in the placebo, in the control group, we have a placebo certificate with the same stamp. This says nothing at all about skills. It just says the worker was willing to meet this firm, which is something both already knew. And so the average worker is going to meet one firm, the average firm, three workers, because we have more workers than firm. And the allocation of workers to firm is random, I should say, within sector and region. So we don't try to force any particular allocation. Importantly, after, this is just, you know, this is a one-shot. We do the interviews, and then we leave the certificate to the worker. And then at the point, the worker is free to go in the labor market, and we follow the workers for two years. So to be very clear on compliance and attrition, because we have like two experiments, right? We have the matching, where we implement the randomization, but then we also follow the workers regardless of the match. So we start with our workers and firms. And so we schedule 1,000 to 130 job interviews, half in control, half in treatment. About 40% actually take place. Now, this is because, if you remember from the timeline, the intervention took place about two months after the end of the training programs. Importantly for us, and this is actually interesting, of course, treatment doesn't predict selection, of course, because treatment was only, we can test that, but was only given conditionally showing up at the job interview. But extremely few, actually, none of the work and firm characteristics that we have predict selection into the final sample. We have moderate attrition, less than 15%. I just want to make clear, we follow everybody in the worker follow-up service, regardless of whether they complied with the treatment or not. Okay? So we have these two levels of analysis. At the match level, I should say, attrition is also not correlated to treatment, and the sample remains balanced on observable characteristics of both follow-ups. So we have these two levels of analysis. We can do analysis at the match level. So Yij is going to be the outcome of the job interview between worker I and from J. Okay? So here, we're going to adjust the standard errors. We're going to cluster them both at the level of the firm and the worker, because a firm is meeting more than one worker. Potentially, a worker can also meet more than one firm. We use, our preferred sample is all the workers that actually show up, and the firms that show up for the meetings, the 42%, because we don't have selection based on treatment. Now, in doing that, of course, of the workers and firms that show up, we have full compliance at the point. Everybody that shows up is given the certificate. So we're going to interpret these beta ones as average treatment effect on the population of workers and firms that does meet. Of course, this population could be very different on unobservable from the population of workers and firms that were assigned to the intervention. I don't have time to talk about it here, but we do robustness checks. We even estimate a sample selection model, two-sided model of sample selection. Don't have time to talk about that, but the results are robust. So the analysis at the worker level is plain vanilla. We just do an ANCOV estimation, normally for the baseline value of the outcome. Here, of course, beta one is going to be the intention to treat, because now we follow everybody regardless of whether they showed up at the matching or not. Okay? Okay, so let me start by whether the managers react to the information. So we're going to use information from the matching surveys. After each job interview, we ask the managers their opinion on the worker that they just met. And so we can construct a dummy equal to one if the manager reported the worker as being more skilled than the usual applicant they see. And we interpret this as kind of direct evidence on whether managers value this information and they're reacting to this information. So what you find, we're going to, I'm going to just look at the treatment effect on the full sample. These are the matches that take place. And then I'm going to split by these high and low ability managers that we show values of skills differently. And so what we see is that there is no, it seems like the average manager is not reacting at all to the certificates. But again, this kind of mass substantial heterogeneity. The high ability managers really revise up their beliefs on the skills that match workers, on average, and the low ability managers don't. You might think that, you know, you might expect the reaction to be stronger for workers with a higher level of skills. So here, we can split by whether the worker had a pass grade on all these skills. You can do this split by skill by skill, and you find the similar results. There is some evidence, the high ability managers are reacting more strongly to workers that have a pass grade on everything. But there is really no evidence of negative reaction for anybody, and we are not really able to pick out significant differences. And why is this, remember, the sample is, so this is all consistent with the sample being positively selected. Even the, and so the effects are really for the average worker, since the average workers are actually pretty good. There is not that many workers that have very bad grades. And again, I told you, the managers have relatively low priors on the distributions of these skills. So this is important, I think it's telling us that at least some managers value the information, right? While some seem not to. And these are the ones that value some skills more. Now, if you're just worried that we're capturing something else with this high ability dummy, we can put a number of work and firm characteristics interacting with treatment all in the same regression. And the high ability dummy is really the one that matters. And by the way, this is actually uncorrelated to most high ability of the managers, uncorrelated to most manager characteristics. So these are evidences, some managers are reacting to this. And so, but do the workers also react? Because now they have in their hands a piece of paper that might be a credible signal on the skills. So we follow them for two years here. So these are going to be regressions at the worker level. And so what I'm going to show you is that workers report higher, about higher expected earnings, they have a high, with a certificate, higher expected probability of employment. They're at the 10% level, but there is some evidence of them being, reporting being more likely, more willing to bargain for wages. And also, they are more likely to say that their ideal job is in a firm with more than 10 employees. Okay, now, is this all only cheap talks? Or are they actually doing anything differently that justifies this kind of change in beliefs? Well, they're pulling out quite heavily from casual work, which of course is the least well-paid type of employment. They're more likely even to look for jobs in sectors like the NGO or public sector, that you think might pay high wages, might value potentially some skills more. We don't know, but that's just a conjecture. They don't increase their search intensity overall. So again, this is, and so one thing, I don't have time to go through this, but we validate, why are the workers reacting to this? And we can show in other tables that the workers are not learning about themselves. So they actually, the skills that we measure already, they correlate pretty well with, when we asked the control group to rate themselves on the skills, and they've never seen the certifications, there's quite a positive correlation there, and the treatment doesn't change that. So workers are not learning about their skills. But when we ask them about their perceived constraints in signaling skills, there is a reduction in answers to those questions for the workers in the treatment group. So it seems like the effects are coming from the signaling value rather than from the learning about your own type. Okay, so I've showed you that some managers value the certificates, that the workers seem to be, but also workers seem to react into the certificates. So we have, I don't have time, of course, to go through the model, but the intuition is very simple. What should we expect to see then on employment and earnings? Now, the managers, some managers are reacting, so they think the workers are more productive than they thought before. So this should push up employment. But also, the workers are reacting, and they are increasing potentially their expectations. So one thing that is clear is that wages should increase, because managers are willing to pay, you know, we can interpret the fact that managers think workers are more skilled as the fact that they would be willing to pay them more. We can interpret that, you know, but wages should go up, We can interpret that, you know, but, so wages should go up, but it's not clear that employment should go up, right? We could have, you know, zero effects on employment, this totally depends on the magnitude of the reaction of the managers in terms of beliefs compared to the magnitude of the reaction of the workers in terms of employment, in terms of employment expectations. So actually, we don't find that much unemployment, we have a small bump at the match, at the initially matched firms, so the managers that do react on beliefs are also more likely to hire some of the workers. But then these effects kind of dissipate, and actually, in the long run, we have no effect on probability of employment, stuff, employment hour works, and so on. Okay, but do we have anything on wages? Because that's the key margin, that's the thing that you would want to see shifting for productivity and, and based on the updating that we've seen. Okay, so I'm just going to show, again, we don't have any selection into employment, right? So this is telling us, on the extensive margin, we have absolutely no effect of the treatment changing employment. Now, do we see anything on earnings? Earnings are going to be trying, to be, try and be very transparent on what we do in earnings. If you put everybody in, you know, the 25% of people are employed, you give them zeros, you just do total earnings or less, we find that, you know, about a 7% increase, which is not statistically significant. Okay, but do we have evidence, you know, that somewhere along the earnings distribution, we are seeing these effects? So this is just, again, everybody is in here, zeros for the people unemployed, we do a quantile regression, you start seeing positive effects at the top of the distribution, okay? Now, you might be worried of, you know, of, before throwing out the zeros and doing earnings conditional employment, you might be worried that the sample, the treatment is affecting the selection of workers into the, into employment. We know there is no selection in the share of employed, I showed you before, there could be, of course, compositional changes. So here, we run a balanced test conditional employment. And I mean, if you just look at the normalized differences, these are tiny, I mean, these are, these are, I would love to have these when we are on the nomination, right? We have the highest normalized difference between all the observable characteristics is 0.08. Okay, so I mean, if you allow me to look at earnings conditional employment, then I have an 11% increase in earnings, as shown here. So I think this is highly suggestive evidence that, you know, I would say, you know, it's conditional employment, but I think we have done the due diligence of checking that there is no selection into employment, to show that actually the certificates increase earnings. And so this is consistent because we have seen that the managers also value this information with this, with the certificates having increased productivity. And so again, if it's true that, so I'm just going to take one more minute, if it's true then that, you know, some work managers value the certificates and workers also value the certificates, so why aren't these certificates already there? Because we're evaluating a new type of certificate, right? These kinds of certificates are not already provided in this market. And so, because the intervention, I mean, of course, you know, this is such a cheap intervention, that as soon as you believe that there is any effect on earnings, we're going to find this is cost-effective, right? So is it, you know, there are some papers show that maybe workers underestimate the value of these, and that they don't demand these kind of certificates. Here, we ask the workers in control their willingness to pay for the certificates that they have never seen, and workers will be willing to pay 44% of their monthly earnings for one certificate, which is very close, by the way, interestingly, to the cost of the certificate. The cost to us on average was $19, the workers were willing to pay on average 18.6. So we can rule out that there is lack of demand from workers, I think. Okay, but then why doesn't somebody enter the market, you know, an entrepreneur, and start selling these certificates? Well, we think the risk is an important factor here. We are, you know, we, we are able to provide a credible signal because Brac is the largest NGO in the country, it's not obvious that a new firm, the one, the ones who start doing this, would be able to achieve these kind of results, because you would have to build up a reputation, which could take a long time. And it might be very hard to establish in a context that is very kind of plagued by, by corruption, for example. So finally, one, the final point I want to conclude on is that you might say, okay, why aren't the vocational training institutes already certifying the workers on these skills? Well, as I showed you before, when we propose workers the possibility to participate, 25% of the workers decide to select out, they don't participate to the intervention, and we noticed that the workers with the lowest of skills. So it's not clear at all, I mean, the positive results that were documented are for a positively selected sample of workers, it's not clear that every worker will benefit from this. Actually, we do a bounding exercise in the paper, it could be that some workers at the low end of the distribution might be hurt by these certificates, right? This is not a training program that is either helping somebody or not, you know, the worst case, it doesn't help you. This, if we believe, you know, that the firms are trying to screen out the bad types, this could hurt some workers. So it's not clear that the vocational institutes would want to, you know, just, just start testing workers on soft skills, as this may affect enrollment decisions of workers with low soft skills to begin with. And finally, then, should the government intervene? Again, for the same reason, it depends on what's the welfare function, it depends on what's, kind of political economy considerations. This is an intervention that can create redistributive effects, right? Some workers are going to gain and productivity overall should increase, but some workers might lose. And so depending on what, you know, depending on how the government cares about quality versus efficiency, it's not clear that there is enough, that there is enough incentives for them to, to step in.
Thanks. Really interesting. Did you do a similar exercise with, so you had the distribution of income showing that at the upper end, but then that you anticipated that there were, was no real selection into the likelihood of working? Did you look at the impacts across the distribution of your different grade measures, basically, to look at whether you had an increase in the probability of working for the highest achieving workers or something like that?
Yeah, so that's, that's, yeah, it's, so that's a quantile regression. Now, we do heterogeneity by worker skills, again, we don't see them much, because, I mean, the workers are all positively selected, that that's the interpretation that I give, and the fact is really for the average one. So I, we don't find significant results. Yes. Yeah, yeah, so that relates to how we measure these, I think, okay, so just to expand on one, in one second, we use teacher surveys for most of the measures. So we ask the teachers to valid, to tell us how good the work was in attending class, you know, whether he shows up late and so on. So you think, however, for trustworthiness, we use trust games, right? So in terms of scaling up, I think teacher surveys are more scalable, especially if the teacher is kind of seeing the worker for a number of years. There is a big concern, I mean, this is a proof of concept, I'm not, you know, trust, trust games might be very hard to scale up, people learn how to game them. So of course, that's something the government would have to worry about, but leveraging teacher surveys, I think, may be, I mean, if you think, you know, you game the test for, they game the teacher survey for two years, you always come for two years on time, then, you know, you're probably good in attendance, right? So, but, but yeah, that would be, of course, a key point, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So I guess one thing I'm, I wanted to ask about is how, with the employers updating their beliefs, right? And they're, they're quite happy with receiving these certificates. And one interpretation is that because the workers are positively selected, all the news is good news. Another interpretation from a perspective of scale up is that they know, if they know the workers are willing to get the certificate because they're positively selected, maybe that is part of the signal, like the willingness to get the certificate, that you were, I don't know if they, how much they knew what was going on.
Yeah.
Is there a way that you can measure in more detail what they think about the, like, whether they, I mean, I know they don't update more based on the quality of the worker.
A little bit, right?
A little bit, a little bit, but it's not huge. I guess I was wondering how we should think about those two options.
Yeah. So, no, it's very good, but, well, we try, I mean, we, we had the placebo certificate to try and, and get away a little bit of the effect of, you know, this is somebody endorsed from Brac, somebody showed interest in Brac. So that, that may be, and you're saying that should kind of push just every, you know, every effect to be positive. That would have to, yeah, the placebo, I think the placebo helps us a little bit, it's telling us that it's not just that the worker was willing to go through a program. Right. Yep, yep, so that, that's a good point. I think, other than just showing that the effect is somewhat larger on the updating for the workers with a higher level, so you, yep, yeah, it's a good point, yeah, I think, I think it's part of, I mean, it's part of interpretation, now you're saying that could be, yeah, really, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the ultimate test would have been to have the whole distribution of the, of the scores. No, it's, yeah. Yeah? Yeah, yeah.
Are better matched to their skills? So for example, I would imagine a trustworthy guy being a good match for a job that has low monitoring, something like that, so if you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we don't have direct evidence, we don't know the characteristics of the firms that are employed. So I'm, here, I'm taking kind of earnings, kind of a summary measure.